Guys, and join us in the pledge allegiance, we'll start our meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you everyone for being here and also those watching online, this is a live broadcast. Our meetings are broadcast online, in case you can't be here in person, you can watch at home or wherever you are. This is the Union Township Board of Trustees' regular meeting for April 8th, 2021. Let the record show that all three trustees are present and also our fiscal officer, Mr. Ron Campbell. Thank you gentlemen for being here. Gentlemen, the first item on the agenda is approval of our minutes. You've had a chance to look this over, there's no additions or corrections, I'll ask for a motion to approve the March 11th, 2021 regular meeting minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, Mr. McGee?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Loeb?
Yes.
Mr. McGraw?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Next, we have the March 11th, 2021 zoning meeting minutes. If there's no corrections or changes, I'll ask for a motion to approve those.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, Mr. McGee?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Loeb?
Yes.
Mr. McGraw?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great. Next item is correspondence, Mr. Campbell, did you have anything to report tonight?
No, sir, I have none, thank you.
All right, thank you. So we'll go right on to our department reports. Glad to have all our different departments here. First will be from our Fire and Emergency Medical Service, Chief Stan Dymling reporting.
Thank you, Mr. McGraw, for the month of March, the department made 198 fire responses, 465 emergency medical responses, and with those responses, we transported 350 times to local hospitals. The department completed 1,740 hours of training, participated in 16 public education details and trying to get caught up and back up and running with fire safety inspections, because obviously during last year, we were hampered in being able to do those with the pandemic. So in the month of March, we completed 105 fire safety inspections. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Chief, any questions or comments, Mr. Loeb?
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, and also thanks to your department for helping out with the, some of the administering of the COVID vaccine at West Claremont, so great job over there, appreciate it. Our next report tonight is from our Police Department, Chief Scott Gaviglia.
Thank you, Mr. McGraw. Report for March 2021, Communication Center handled approximately 3,400 calls for service for police, fire, and EMS. Records Division processed approximately 450 court records, both juvenile and adult, to deliver down to the clerk's office. Public Affairs, we hosted a couple student rioters in March, we're back to doing some tours, we had a Cub Scout tour through the PD, and we review the list of financial institutions every year, and we go over our robbery response plans. Each financial institution does things a little differently, we like to try and keep them all on pace with their respective loss prevention PPA. The administration side of things, the body camera equipment's arrived from Axon, we've already done the bulk of the setup work. I suspect by the, maybe as soon as next week, we'll have them out on the field and trial, and we hope to have everybody implemented in June, maybe before that if things keep going as well as they are. On Patrol Division, we took 332 incident reports, investigated 103 crashes, conducted 341 traffic stops, issued 110 citations and 241 warnings, conducted 376 field interviews, made 108 criminal arrests, 72 traffic arrests, and we served 200 warrants. The K-9 team seized 37 grams of marijuana, 12 and a half grams of heroin, 61 and a half grams of methamphetamines, and 10 narcotic-type pills. Training for the month was approximately 184 hours for Police Department employees, and fuel cost was about $8,200 with 32,000 miles driven. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Gentlemen, any questions or comments?
Been very busy. Thank you, Chief, thank you. Thank you very much to you and your man.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, just one chief, or just one comment, thank you, Chief. I spoke with the Prosecutor's Office over the course of several months, with, you know, again, when we were going out to bed for the body cameras, but just something that they shared that I want to echo is, in regard to Union Township Police Department, having the ability to utilize cameras now, you know, law enforcement is a difficult job, and the officers that put their lives on the line deserve our full support. Body worn cameras are very valuable support tools that assist both officers and prosecutors during the investigations. This addition will surely add to the incredible work that the women and men of Union Township Police Department already do. Just wanted to echo that comment from Prosecutor's Office.
Thank you, sir, I'm grateful to the board for the opportunity to present this to the township, thank you.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Loeb. Our next report tonight is from our Service Department, and we have the one and only Mr. Sean Hartman's here tonight.
Thank you, Mr. McGraw.
Thank you.
Thank you. In our Cemetery Division, we had, from March 15th to the 31st, we had 11 burials that generated $5,775. Six resident graves were purchased, generating $2,900. Two non-resident graves were purchased, totaling $3,000. The total amount generated this period at the cemetery was $15,851.60. In our Roads Division, we completed a total of 19 work orders on 17 township streets. In our Parks Division, maintenance was performed on all township baseball fields. The first round of lawn fertilizer was applied to all township properties. And staff is currently mulching all township landscape beds. And I just wanted to remind everybody that junk collection is the 19th through the 24th of this month, and that'll be Monday through Friday from 7:00 to 5:00, and then Saturday will be 8:00 to 3:00. That concludes my report, thank you.
Thank you, well done. Gentlemen, any questions or comments?
No, looks like they've been very busy, our maintenance group, thank you very much, Mr. Hartman.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And I also want to thank you and your staff and our administration, Mr. Geis, for, there was an issue with the road construction at Teal Towns, obviously caused some heartache for some people because of the road being closed. And what one issue was, people were trying to cut down Claremont Lane to Glen Estee Lane, realizing it was a dead end, and then getting stuck on Honey Hill.
Background.
And so I talked to some of the residents there, and they were, they said it was like a road close sign at one point, but it got taken away by the county or whoever the construction crew was. So I asked for some help to see if there's anything that could be done, and I think it was by 8:00 AM the next morning, the crew was, had already put the signs up. So it was just fantastic how fast they got out there and took care of the problem. The residents are very thankful that you did that, so Mr. Geis and the Service Department appreciate the quick action there. It makes a big difference. And then there was other signs put up closer to Old 74 too, that really helped too. I've had no complaints since then, so.
Thank you.
They must be working. Hopefully that project will be done soon.
Yes.
All right, we'll move on to our Planning and Zoning Department, Mr. Corey Wright, Director.
Thank you, Mr. McGraw, for the month of March, we had 42 inspections, fielded nine complaints, three unfounded complaints, five warning citations issued, four 15-day non-compliance letters, and two 30-day letters were sent out. Additionally, we resolved 25 issues administratively and re-inspected nine existing violations. Regarding permit activity for the month of March, we had two new commercial permits, eight commercial occupancy changes, 10 signed permits, three new single-family home permits, contemporary construction trailer. The remaining permits were homeowner projects, additions, decks, accessory buildings, pools and fences. 73 permits for the month of March, monthly revenue $9,214. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much, gentlemen, any questions for Mr. Wright?
Collect people starting to get back out and get some yard work done in. Mr. Wright, thank you very much for all you and your staff do.
Thank you, Mr. Wright.
Activity is almost double of what it was last year, so.
I know.
Great start. All right, we'll move on then to our Administration, Mr. Ken Geis, Township Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. McGraw. One of the report that are in a report should now link to the Facebook page as you requested, so everyone will be able to see it on that medium as well. The TID received the bids for the sanitary sewer on Round Bottom Road for the Hamilton Safe project. The low bid was around $760,000. We will be submitting a purchase order for that, and as the Board of Members, we have a cooperative agreement with the county on that for a funding mechanism on that, and the total compensation will be paid out of TIF revenue as it relates to the new project for that, so that'll be forthcoming. The, there's an item on the agenda tonight for the road resurfacing project, we had estimated that at around $600,000. The bids came in very well this year, at around $512,000. The purchase order's gonna, you'll see on the addendum, is for $600,000, and that's for potential contingencies, and if there are some other roads that we could do in the process, since we really allocated that much, it's a quantities bid, so we get the benefit of that low pricing this year to add some streets that we otherwise wouldn't have added to that, based upon that number. We did receive a $10,000 grant for the resurfacing of the tennis courts. The total cost of that is going to be less than $50,000, and we had talked about repurposing one of the courts to pickleball courts, and it looks like we might be able to get as many as four court, four pickleball courts in there. So sometime in the late spring, early summer, we should resurface that, and it should be open to the public with the two tennis courts and the pickleball courts. I wanted to let the board know that I did reach out to Commissioner Painter and talk to him about the county relief funding that was distributed to all of the municipal corporations and counties in the state of Ohio. As the boards aware, the townships are presently excluded from that. I asked him to consider distributing half of what the county received, which is estimated around $40 million, to the townships, since we were left out of that funding mechanism. Again, no commitment, but he certainly was aware that, you know, we weren't, didn't receive any funding, and to date, I'm not sure that they have a plan for the expenditures of what they're going to use that money for, but as that develops, I'll certainly update the board. I also sent letters to Representative Schmidt and Representative Seitz regarding the budget bill, and specifically in the budget bill, there's a proposal that would bring back the ability to combine police and fire levies into a safety services levy like we had prior to the last go-around in that. I did receive a callback from Representative Seitz's office indicating that he does support that change back to that legislation. It, you know, beyond all of the semantics in that, it's just an additional cost to the township if we have to run two levies for that, and really, it limits the discretion from the Board of Trustees to use the funds as we need them on an annual basis, because there are years when we might spend more money for the Police Department or money, more money for the Fire Department on particularly capital expenses. In that, you'll see, you know, tonight, we have an expense for police vehicles on there. And, you know, we'll probably, we're gonna spend that out of the police fund this year, but we would have the opportunity to use the Safety Services Fund and then maybe stagger those capital expenditures between the police and the Fire Department if we had the ability to combine those levies into one. So again, hopefully that will go through with the budget bill, and that won't be line-eyed and out, or it makes it through the process, but again, I'll keep the board updated on that. The county did sign the memorandum of understanding on the sanitary line for Hamilton Safe. Again, as I mentioned earlier on that, that's a project that really, I want to commend specifically the Prosecutor's Office on that. The township really has been in the forefront on the extension of the sanitary line, which typically is a county function. However, just the nature of the county government and the processes associated with that, we're more in a position to affect that, and we have a relationship, an ongoing relationship with the railroad, which was the, really the integral part in that entire process, was getting an easement from the railroad to bore underneath the crossing on Round Bottom Road to extend the sanitary line. So we were able to affect that, however, there was some issue on the agreements that we were able to negotiate with the railroad, and there was some reluctance on the county to move that forward. So we requested a meeting with all affected parties, including the Prosecutor's Office, and Mark DeColvi, the prosecutor, came with two assistant prosecutors, with Commissioner Painter at that meeting, and, you know, I'm really happy to report that as a result of really a brief meeting of probably, you know, an hour or maybe 90 minutes with our Law Director there, we were able to come up with language that everyone was comfortable with, so that the township wouldn't be required to continue the ownership of that sanitary segment underneath the railroad specifically, and transfer the, that sanitary line back to the county, because we really have no business in owning or managing a sanitary line. But because of some of the language associated with the indemnification clauses in that, we weren't able to do that. But the county prosecutor, I mean, he went out of his way to personally be involved in that, personally suggest some changes to that that everyone could agree to, so again, that's really a change, and I think of what we had, you know, previously in that regard. So I really just wanted to bring out the attention of the board of the cooperative agreement from the Prosecutor's Office as well as the county in that, which was really very good. We're going to begin the audits for the SID and the ESIDS, the Energy SIDS, in that, Mr. Bastin completed the year-end financials on that, and he's going to send the baseline information to the state of Ohio. The majority of that's done off-site, we can transfer the records to them, and they can do all of that. They'll probably come to the facility for a short period of time, in case they have any questions or to review maybe some original records, but we don't anticipate that there's going to be any problems or issues on that. You'll notice on the agenda too, that there's a resolution requesting the vacation of that Clepper Road project, and that was initiated by the Wyler family, and that's a change in what has been allowed previously. The township is now allowed to petition the Claremont County Commissioners for the vacation of land that is previously used as a road, that is no longer has any value of a road in that. And it generally cleans up right-of-way instances and takes what almost amounts to paper streets or streets that have no legitimate trail purpose in the township off the record plat, so that then that property is dispersed between the adjacent property owners. So that's on the board for consideration. As I talked about, there's also a purchase order for the cruisers on that. We're going to buy, I think it's six cruisers this year, from that, those are all state bid items that we have. There's also a purchase order for a bariatric cot. In talking to Chief Dymling, there's really not a bariatric cot in the region. And there, we see an increased need for that, and when there's a need, it's an extreme need for that. So we've tried to, you know, borrow cots from other folks in the area, other fire departments and EMS units, and really, no one in this region has one that we can use. So it really makes sense for us to replace an existing cot that we have with this bariatric cot that we can use under normal circumstances as well. And really, it's even better than putting that cot in a EMS unit that we would use on a temporary basis, because if we only use it during the bariatric units, we'll probably run the issue with, you know, either the EMS unit won't start, or that something would be a failure point in that. But if we, if we put it in a first-line service in that, these things are made to be used every day, and we can put it in that, and we can use that to make sure that when it is needed, that it is available for us, as well as for mutual aid in other parts of Claremont County and really Hamilton County. You also note that there's a purchase order for this sign at Station 49. That's our ongoing process to change over all of our manual signs to the LED signs, in that the program is to add one sign each year from all the locations that we have. Station 49 is just the next in that order. And then there's a, an item under New Business about what has historically been called Old Barksaw Run Road. That's a, some pavement that has been under really contention, or I don't want to say confusion, but really, there's been some issue as to whether it's a road, whether it's a township road, whether it's an ODOT road in right-of-way. And historically, since I've been here, it's always been treated as that that is not a township road. We've gone to the county, and we've been through three county engineers now, and it's never been assigned a T-number on that, and that's a road that extends from really the bridge overpass on Barksaw Run Road over 275 south into that. That road was originally part of the original Barksaw Run Road that was there before the interstate. When the interstate was created, in that, ODOT purchased a permanent right-of-way of the real estate, and really, it amounted to about 183 feet of where the existing Barksaw Run Road runs south onto that. And then they purchased temporary easements and construction easements for the last 100 feet of that. When the road was redirected, 275 was built, ODOT continued and maintained their ownership of the right-of-way on the first 183 feet, the last 100 feet was really never dealt with. If that would have occurred today, or if that would occur today, typically, we would go under the same process like we're doing tonight with the Wyler family, in that there would be a vacation of that roadway in that, because it has no legitimate value, it just serves as the two residences on Barksaw Run Road, and what the county is called Old Barksaw Run Road. So one of the, one of the owners on there talks about maintaining it or whatever, and we said, you know, we really just, we can't. We don't own that, it's not a township road. So we have talked about it, and we've talked about it for several years, and so it was like, well, let's really get some definitive answer on what that really is and how we should treat that. So what we've determined is that the last 100 feet of that really was not vacated, it was not a permanent easement, it was not a road right-of-way that was acquired by the ODOT or Claremont County into that. And we asked the county, it's like, well, how would you treat that? Because there's no T-number assigned to that, because all of our roads, to be a township road there, it has to be a T-number assigned to it and recorded in the township log with the state of Ohio. So they said, well, since it, there was never any definition to it, we would potentially classify that as part of Barksaw Run Road. And I said, well, how would you do that based upon the fact that there's 183 feet in front of it that is not Barksaw Run Road, and it's ODOT-owned and controlled right-of-way? And they didn't really have a good answer for that, but they said the township could consider it a, in their opinion, they could consider it a township road or not. The 183 feet is right-of-way, you know, owned by ODOT, there's no debate about that. So I talked to ODOT, we were able to get some plans from them as to exactly what occurred in 1969 and 1970 on that, and it confirmed what, you know, I had indicated. I talked to them about the processes of that, and they said, you know, that's not something that they maintain on a regular basis, it's not something that they're going to plow the roads during the winter conditions, fix the roads under that. They said, as long as we have the ability to enter that property and exit that property, that's the extent of their concern on that. So I said, if the Board of Trustees, I said, I'm going to present this to the board, I said, if the Board of Trustees asks you to transfer that road right-of-way to the township, would ODOT agree to do that? Of course they would, as long as we maintain it as a township road, and we maintain that as a public right-of-way. So what, that's just really a background for the discussion later tonight under New Business, or unless you wanted to talk about it now, in that the, I think the board has, you know, a couple of options. We can continue to do what we've always done, and treated that as really not the... We can continue to do what we've always done and treated that as really not the township road, all 283 or 290 feet of that. We could treat the last 100 feet as the township road in that. Or we could start the process to acquire the right-of-way from ODOT on the 183 feet and include the last 100 feet in that. The only option that I think is problematic for us is if the board said, we're not going to deal with the first 183 feet. We're only going to take the 100 feet that may or may not be a township-controlled pavement at this particular time. Because then effectively, we would have to travel over 183 feet, not do anything to that, treat and maintain 100 feet of pavement for the benefit of just one residence at the end of it, which would be problematic for snow removal, de-icing conditions, and really just general maintenance. So if you're looking for some recommendation from me, I think that really it's just one of two options in that, to either do what we're continually doing or to move to begin the process to reestablish that as Barksaw Run Road. The last point on that is when talking to Claremont County, they call that Old Barksaw Run Road. I think the worst thing that we could do is if the board moved to, or directed us or me to begin this process to reestablish that, is to say that that's now Old Barksaw Run Road. Because if it is Old Barksaw Run Road, then we would have to go through the process of journalizing that. And that would require that the two residences that are on there, that they would have to change their addresses. We would have to modify the E911 system in that, change the mapping in the state of Ohio, which would just be a problem. It's now, everyone understands that, that they have Barksaw Run Road addresses on that. If the board, you know, is inclined to do, you know, the option to include that in it, I think it would make sense for us to just say, well, that is part of Barksaw Run Road. There's just a Y there. There are two additional residences on that. The mail gets delivered there. Our safety services know where it is. Our public works department knows what that is. And so I don't think it would be an issue with us if the board were so inclined to move in that direction. That concludes my report, unless there are any questions on that or anything else.
Gentlemen, do you have any questions?
Not this time.
Mr. Geis, the memorandum of understanding, from the language I read in it, the ultimate goal will be, at some point, it'll be transferred to the county water and sewer department. Is that the ultimate goal?
That's correct, yes.
Unless there's some reason it can't, then it can't. But that is what we're trying to do.
That's correct, yes.
And we're just trying to expedite the issue by bidding forward now.
Yes, correct.
Okay, great. And I don't think I have any questions about the Barksaw Run Road. I did at one point, but I believe I understand everything now. The potential cost of bringing it up to speed, trimming, I think there's some bushes that need to be trimmed because it's kind of narrow, but paving it or fixing it, what would you say the ballpark number would be to get that done?
$20,000 or less. And then the continuing maintenance would be really negligible.
Right. That's all I got right now? Gentlemen, anything? No?
Yes, just, Mr. Geis, thank you for, again, reaching out to Representative Schmidt and sites, talked with Representative Schmidt on the budget bill as well. It'd be great to push that lower-level authority down to the board to be able to have the capability to utilize police-fire levels as needed. So that's great flexibility. And also, just on the memorandum of understanding, sanitary line, just want to say thank you and great working with the county prosecutor, Mark Tocolvi. His office has been great to talk with and also your continued work in relationship with commissioners. Thank you. And then with regards to the Barksaw Run, just, you know, I've heard about that quite frequently and that was one of our first conversations, was pushing for a more defined answer. This really helps. You know, I see there's three courses of action there. So essentially, one of them is cut out that would not be, so they're, you know, down-select it down to two courses of action. So just again, I appreciate the defined answer with that. So it's very helpful to know and know what the real history is there and where government has been involved and where they've not been involved over the years. So thank you, Mr. Geis. Thank you for the report.
So thank you for all the department reports. Appreciate it. Good job, everybody. Tonight, we're going to move on to public hearings. We do have two public hearings to go over tonight. Our first case is Union Township Overlay Case 5-21-0 for Mary David, who's the applicant. This is for 4620 I. Colts Road, better known as the Gold Star Chili in Mount Carmel. They're looking to do some remodeling, some improvements. And Mr. Wright, did you have some opening comments?
Thank you, Mr. McGraw. I do. This request is for 4620 I. Colts Road. This is an overlay request in the Mount Carmel Business Corridor, which is a commercial corridor defined by the zoning resolution. The applicant seeks relief from multiple sections of the zoning resolution on non-conforming use of property in combination to redevelop and improve the existing Gold Star in Mount Carmel. Pretty straightforward here. The applicant has the existing site. You can see here it's Zone B1. And the applicant proposes a renovation. And this is the modified site plan put together in response to the staff comments. Basically here, they're going to provide a new design on the exterior of the building, add some additional square footage. They will need to provide a landscaping plan and some screening that we traditionally work with the applicants administratively on these parcels. The other comments are fairly standard for commercial development, dark sky compliant lighting, monument signage, and importantly, moving the dumpster from its present location and providing a new enclosure, which will improve the visual aesthetic of the site. You can see here the renderings of the building. This tower here is going to be an added and modernized approach to the sod with the new awnings, very similar to some other projects that they've done in the Cincinnati area. So the action required is in accordance with 1310 of the zoning resolution, the board is to approve modifier or deny this request. If the board grants favorable consideration, there are six recommended modifications that the applicant has been provided with and has in fact addressed some of those to this date already with the dumpster enclosure and look forward to working with the applicant throughout the rest of this project. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. A quick question for you. The sign in the rendering there of the elevations, is that a current sign or is that beyond the monument signage?
That is the current sign that's there. We have obviously asked for them to address that sign as a monument sign on the property and to either relocate it if they're able to or to put it in that small island there at the front of the building. Either way, we would work with them to reduce the height of that consistent with our other regulations.
And then because of their unique location of where they are, I. Colts Road, the back of the restaurant faces State Route 32. Was there any additional signage on the back of the restaurant requested or that you're aware of?
They did not submit any signage for the back of the building that we saw. Typically, we'll get a fairly rudimentary signage package early on and then they'll work to finalize that through the development process. And that's something we work, again, administratively with. I would imagine that we may see, depending, there's significant grade change there with the highway. So we may see an additional sign on the 32 side, which is very common in the Mount Carmel area.
Right. It would seem like it would make sense. That's why I asked about it. Okay, great. Any other questions for Mr. Wright?
Yes, as always, Mr. Wright, the modifications, the six modifications, they are okay with the six modifications that you brought to their attention? We spoke, I've spoken to the applicant. We always provide them with a copy of the report prior to the trustees meeting so they have the opportunity to interface with staff if they have any questions or need any clarification.
Great.
Thank you, sir.
All right, this is a public hearing. So is there anyone here tonight who wants to speak on behalf of Union Township Overlay Case 5-21-0 for Gold Star? Let's see, we have a person. Who would raise your, first stick your name and address for the record.
Steve Schlagbaum, 650 Lunkin Park Drive, Cincinnati, Ohio 45226 is G.S., Gold Star corporate location.
Okay, please raise it right now. Do you swear the information you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? So help you God.
Yes, sir.
All right, great. Please proceed with any comments you'd like to make.
Thank you for having us, by the way. Couple of things, we did receive the response letter as Troy has talked about, we've gone through and addressed a number of those items. Gold Star is rebranding all of our stores. We're remodeling them, we're expanding our menu, we're adding burgers, fries and shakes back into the mixes that don't have them. Consequently, that requires us to update some of the interior in order to accommodate additional pieces of equipment. As part of the rebranding, we're also redoing exterior looks for finishes, interior as well, but in this case, the exterior looks for finishes, different paint schemes, different applied signage on the building where we're getting rid of the old teardrop awnings, we're putting in new awnings, we're trying to incorporate our expanded menu items on those awnings, if it's okay?
Yeah, that's fine.
In order to accentuate some of the new look in the elements, we do have signage calculations and things. I already talked to Corv about the fact that we're going to go through those in more detail. I did want to clarify that on this existing structure, there is a pole sign on I. Colts. There is also an existing pole sign on the 32 side of the building. We are not, well, our intent is not to address all of the pole signs at this phase of work and it's primarily because of budget. To reface, even just to reface, one of our existing pole signs runs anywhere between $15,000 to $17,000 for new panels, for new LED inserts and everything else. And so what we've required or what we're requesting, unless the specific franchisee requests it, we're going to remodel the building, get the punch done with that, and then eventually come back in Phase Two and address existing pole signs. A number of locations have updated or changed their standards from pole signs to monument signs. And so at this point right now, I guess what we're requesting is clarification, if we did just a face change on the signage, is it still required to go to a monument design? Because each site is unique when it comes to trying to locate, maximize the size, the location. This particular property is pinched as it is for a monument sign with requirements for size, scale, height, et cetera. So do we have to do anything with pole sign at this time is the question, looking for clarification? If they went back and just did a new design on our face change, which the picture that's depicted in here of the proposed, and I guess there isn't a picture, I had printed out some pictures from Street View of what it is, that pole sign is what is there now. Reader board, the square sign, what we've done on our renovations when the franchisees requested it, is we actually have a sign company come out, measure that square box. They then create a new template and incorporate what is now our new round logo into that square frame, black out the rest of it so that at night it looks like it's just round. Because the extensive cost to rebuild that frame on the top of the pole and everything else gets excessive. Typically, we remove all of what is typically in those signs as eight-foot by eight-foot square or eight-foot fluorescent fixtures. They're all replaced with LED relighting on the interior. So the reader boards typically are not redone. In Bethel right now, the owner had requested a new sign. He also is putting in electronic reader board. They're far and few between when that happens, though. So again, to clarify, there are two pole signs, one on 32, one on the front. We weren't looking at doing anything with them specifically at this time. I'd like to be able to have the option to work into those details down the road, even though I think it was one of the line item number one for the freestanding sign in the report. So the other items, dumpster enclosure, we're relocating it, we're proposing to put it in the back. We've got a masonry enclosure proposed. The parking lot is all going to be completely repaired, overlaid and restripped. That's somewhat of a necessity from the standpoint that when the improvements were done, we need to reconfigure and better create flow and parking spaces to improve it. Additional landscaping, again, we didn't address any of that specific items, although we do run into it. We'll go through the requirements for that corridor, work with landscape architect, figure out what we can fit into our small space without putting everything on the backside of the building on 32. Lighting, again, everything is replaced on the building with new LEDs, all of it is directional down. So I think that's taken care of. And the last item that was listed on here, and I didn't review all the specifics, is proposed addition, maintain the amount of ephesus on the building. The squared-off tower on both the front corner and the existing tower on the side of the building is a face change from the standpoint that it is, we're not adding square footage to the footprint of the building. The tower on the front corner is nothing more than basically an eight-inch projection on the existing in order to try to give it some definition and some visibility for the awnings, for the light, or for the, yeah, the lights over the awnings. But one of the comments was to reduce the amount of ephesus on the structure. The way that we minimize the look on that is through the new color scheme where we've got the dark band on the bottom of it and then the ephesus on the top, we break that up with the awnings, with the signage. So I'm not real sure, being that it's all existing, what's expected for that request? Because I can't rebuild the building. It's just economically not feasible to do.
All right, Mr. Wright, first, a question about the sign. Are they able to keep that sign as long as they're not making fundamental changes to it?
Yes, sir. And what that requirement says is that if they put it, what that does is that establishes the path forward for a new sign, should they upgrade their signage at a later date. That would establish the baseline for that moving forward. If they elect to just do a cabinet change, we don't even require a permit application for a, what we would call a face change, which is just simply swapping out the existing plastic and vinyl graphic application there. That would be just handled administratively with no permit fees collected.
Okay.
And then regarding his question on the ephesus, what I would suggest is that they work with us to come up with some, and I would agree that the offsets and the color scheme can help better improve the aesthetic there, considering if there are new materials being deployed, if there is any new exterior materials being deployed, we would look toward the traditional, you know, materials. But if most of it is repair or replacement and rehab, then we can work with color scheme and other things to create or sort of foster that look that breaks up the standard stucco appearance of a building, so.
Perfect. Okay. So the general answer then is that at some point, if they look to really upgrade that signage, then they would have to go to the monument at that time.
Okay. And that's what we usually run into and that's acceptable. Like I said, even the face change at this point right now is more of what we've pushed into our Phase Two remodel. We want to, when we shut down these stores, they were shut down for about three to four weeks. Lost down for about three to four weeks, lost the income completely. Hopefully, we retain the employees, they rehire, they restaff, they reopen, they get a big increase. We've increased somewhere between twenty-eight, thirty-two percent of sales because of the stores, the ones that don't have the burgers and the chicken sandwiches. The ones that did have an increase just because of the new look and the finishes. We want to give them the ability to get some cash flow going back in before we start spending another fifteen to twenty-five thousand dollars on signage and everything. And so, that's the way that we've been approaching most every one of our remodels to date. If that's acceptable, then we can make that work. We'll follow through at that time.
Yeah, I mean, our goal is to move towards the monument signage.
Sure, as most, as most places are.
You have a very nice location on Ohio Pike that's recently opened, and that's a classic example of, you know, really nice looking restaurant.
Yeah.
So we congratulate you on that. But, so we're happy to see the investment being made here, though. But, so, just hope there's understanding, make sure they understand as they move forward down the road, and want to improve the signage, they'll have to mix it with adjustments.
And because we know that now, we can actually start working with our sign company preemptively to figure out a direction so that when we decide to move that way, we're not behind the gun.
Right.
We're already, we're already working with that plan.
Okay.
Great.
And as far as the last item, our staff will work with you as far as approving materials and getting to the word everybody's happy.
I understand.
Unless there's any other questions?
No direct questions at this time.
Good.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else here tonight who would like to speak on behalf of this case? This is a public hearing, so. Okay.
I'd like, I'd like to ask Mr. Wright a question.
Welcome, please close the floor to the public hearing, and Mr. McGee will open the floor for the trustees.
Okay, thank you very much.
You may proceed.
Sorry, just a little ahead of time. On this, number one, this changes to the freestanding sign, as per the conversation you just had with, with Mr. McGraw and with Steve out here, will I have to work with you and staff on this matter?
Yes, sir.
So, shall we eliminate the number one, or shall we keep it in there and make it, as per your conversation?
I, I'm sorry.
I've got potentially a recommendation to that as well.
Go ahead.
So, from my understanding with that, the issue, if we eliminate it, it's going to make the business have to come back through when they do make that decision to do a monument sign. So, it essentially be more red tape and bureaucratic process for them to take those next steps. We don't need to do that. We can cap, we can take care of it right now. And, I mean, I think, Mr. Wright, the way that the language is stated, you're going to support that there probably is no change to it. I'm going to look at a little clarity for it, which would be, any changes in excess of a cabinet change to the front freestanding sign shall bring into effect monument signage for the site, limited to a height of not more than eight feet as measured from grade, including masonry base, subject to administrative review and approval, period. I think adding that language in there defines specifically what they are approaching to do and to work through with the staff to just do the simple cabinet change. And then at the later point in time when they want to do the monument, it's already taken care of, they're able to move forward with it. Would that be?
That, I think that that captures the essence of.
Perfect.
All right.
Perfect. And thank you, Mr. Trustee McGee, for bringing that up. I just wanted to share that as I was writing that down over here. We're on the same wavelength there.
Any other comments, questions?
No, it's the only real comment on that overall is, I mean, I think it's a great area for investment in the Mount Carmel Business District. And, you know, I've been talking with a lot of residents in Mount Carmel and seeing continued investment in that area to revitalize is fantastic. So, you know, this is an existing building, existing business that's been there. And it's, you know, again, I welcome the continued investment and development dollars into those type of structures already here in Union Township. I'd like the residents to be happy and pleased with it, the ones I've, I have been speaking with anyway in that area, so.
Very true. And with the Eichols Road changes, it's bringing a lot more traffic through there, and hopefully it's going to help the restaurant in the long run. But we love seeing the investment in the community, so we do appreciate that, especially in the Mount Carmel area where we're trying to make a concerted effort to bring about new changes in new places. And this is right in line with that, and we appreciate the opportunity to get burgers and chicken sandwiches, too. There you go. Anything else, gentlemen? Is there a motion then? We're being asked to, on this case, Union Township Overlay Case 5-21-0, to either approve, modify, or deny this focus area overlay district application? Is there a motion to that effect?
I'll move to approve in accordance with Section 1310 zoning resolution. What would be modify, to add that language in there?
Okay.
To modify, as submitted with item one, the language of in excess of cabinet change to the front freestanding sign shall bring into effect monument signs for the site, limited to a height of not more than eight feet as measured from grade, including masonry base, subject to administrative review and approval for case number 5-21-0.
And your motion would include all six of the modifications?
Correct, all six of the modifications. And for item number six, that they will continue to work with the staff on the East facade.
Thank you.
I'll second. Rule call, Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. McGraw?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, great. Congratulations, and we look forward to the changes.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, congratulations. Thank you for the forward looking on that for the monument signage.
All right, gentlemen, we have a second case tonight. It's Union Township Overlay Case Number 6-21-0. It's for the Gilligan Company. Pat Gilligan's the applicant. This is for 850 East Gate North Drive. It's a, also known as a Dunkin' Donuts new development request. Mr. Wright, did you have some opening comments for this case?
I do. This is, again, another use of the overlay regulations to foster some development on a site that's otherwise challenged from a traditional perspective. This would allow for the development of a new parcel in the 32 corridor. Again, commercial corridor, we have lots of commercial corridors in the township. This would be a 2,300 square foot Dunkin' Donuts on a B1 piece of property. They propose two points of access. As you can see here, one will be off the private access drive that's sort of defined with the Home2 Suites Hilton under construction. And the other will be on a narrow portion of the lot, just so I can show that, more or less kind of in this area here, because this site is constrained by the existing Jackson Lake detention feature and some significant topography. So, the applicants worked very closely with our office and the county engineer to really come up with a site plan that works, not only from an access and circulation and stacking standpoint, because these are high volume users. These users typically will generate a lot of peak hour trips. So we, they've oriented the site in such a manner to enhance that and to also facilitate loading and unloading in a, in a, in a efficient manner. The building's a, it's kind of a neat looking building. It's a modern building. It has some different patterns, wood elements, some ephesus colored siding, metal accent, sort of modern, and it meshes well with the kind of modern aesthetic that you see with the, the new hotel here. There is some landscaping and similar screening. There is landscaping along East Gate North, which is a standard item for that corridor. Additionally, similar screening would be required along the access drive as well to shield parking spaces from the, the travelway. Monument signage would be a requirement in this area, again, a standard recommendation, and it's been deployed very successfully on East Gate North in that regard, just because of all the recent development that we've had there. And it actually looks very nice through, through that area. The dumpster enclosure is sufficient and placed appropriately, and really, the conditions that are recommended are for fairly standard conditions that we would see in any development review request. So, that concludes my report.
Good. Any questions for Mr. Wright regarding his report?
Not just that, no, I don't have any.
No, thank you, Mr. Wright.
Mr. Wright, the one question I had, if you could go back, if you're able to go back to where it showed the parcel outline on the, on the map, right there, thank you. With that lake feature, I know the people that live on the residential street, I believe, have the upkeep of the lake. This outline's not going to interfere with that in any way, as far as you can tell, correct?
Well, as far as I can tell, I mean, I, I think that the structure has some, there are some easements, if I remember looking at other site plans for retention purposes that were carved out many, many, many years ago. But the resident, I, I don't know what the maintenance obligations are defined there, but the site plan generally does not impact this area in any regard. And it really is limited to, the area that's being mowed now is the area that'll essentially be developed as the site. So, you will not see, it's very similar to with the Raising Cane's site in Hobby Lobby. You won't see, the topography is so severe in, in this area, it, there's really not much, in fact, there's a, there's a small wall that has to go in in this area just to kind of keep the site on one plane, so to speak, and to drain it efficiently.
Okay. And then, I looked at the site plans, I believe, the entrance or indoor exit, there's one off of East Gate North, and maybe, is the other one off the access drive that goes in next to the building there, on the, on the right there?
Yes, sir. And the, the primary entrance is intended to be off the access drive, just, just because of, it is a two-way access point.
Okay.
And the entrance along East Gate North, while we believe will be as frequently used as the private access drive, it is a right in, right out, in working with the applicant and the county engineer's office to preserve that because of spacing requirements and, and the need to kind of protect that, not have multiple points of conflict, mainly due to the multiple left turn movements that are on the boulevard of that location.
Yeah, okay. So it's a right in and right out only?
Yes, sir.
All right, that helps a lot. Thank you. Any other questions?
No.
All right. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here tonight who would like to speak on behalf of this case? Union Township Overlay Case Number 6-21-0 for Dunkin' Donuts. If you could state your name and address for the record.
Pat Gilligan, 2619 Handecide, Cincinnati, Ohio.
Okay, raise it right here. Do you swear the information about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? I hope you got it.
I do.
All right, thank you. Please proceed.
Sure.
Cory, did you have a site plan or any other digital information available?
We can.
But in any case, look, Cory described our project well. We operate 36 Dunkin' Donuts currently. This is a prototype building that we just have a couple under construction and opened one a few weeks ago up in Fairfield. It's a double drive-through, it's a double drive-through operation, so that we're able to put through more cars, obviously for business, but it's because the business is there. We also laid out the site to Cory's point on that site plan. There's some of the image of the building. But the site plan, we moved that curb cut all the way to the western edge of East Gate North so that we could specifically queue cars and keep them on-site relative, versus having them on to, on East Gate North, as shown there. So we've got, what's a 10-car stack from our menu boards, our two order points to the pickup window. We actually have a pay window as well, so those are put in now so that we can increase our capacity of cars per hour into the 120 to 180 range, depending on our throughput on that particular day. And then there's shown about 13 cars in the queue. It could actually fit closer to 20 on-site. So it's a very heavily, it's really our biggest queue of anything we've built or proposed of any of our stores. And then, last, I just wanted to say that is the new prototype image, and it's, as Cory stated, a new modern look that's got some really nice elements. It's been received very well where we've installed it. We're excited to have a place to relocate from our soon-to-be closed, current shell station, do the ODOT take. So, we're planning, if we are fortunate to get your approval on all this, to start construction as soon as possible. Relative to the four recommended modifications, all four of those are fine, and we had assumed those, or would work with Cory on the landscaping, I think was the only one to kind of beef up that eastern access drive component. I do also have Eric Moore here, he's with Farnsworth Group, he's our engineer. It seemed like your question was answered on the Stormwater Detention, Jackson Lake's used for all of the surface area detention in, in this area already. Am I here to answer? Any questions on this fine Thursday night? Oh, and I do want to add, I was fortunate, I downloaded armor backs and about three weeks ago, and it populated, four weeks ago, and it populated UC Claremont, and I came out here to get my vaccination shots, and they did a phenomenal job, very efficient, and really.
Awesome. Glad you got vaccinated. Great. Gentlemen, any questions, concerns?
Just the standard one, I always ask about the recommended modifications. Are you aware of the four recommended modifications, and are you agreeable to them?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
We're good?
Yeah, thank you.
Is there anyone else here tonight that wants to speak on behalf of this case?
That's our engineer.
Oh, we should ask a real hard question.
Engineering question, yeah.
Right. All right, seeing there's no one else at this time to make a comment, I'll close the public hearing and open the hearing for the trustees. Gentlemen, do you have any further comments, questions?
No, I think that just about fills out the parcels in that area for rebuilding that area and seeing some of those drive-throughs through, run-throughs and drive-throughs there. Raising Cane's, Starbucks, Mike's, about taking their place up, haven't they?
They have. And I would also say that the Gilligan Oil Company's been very, a very good township partner for many, many years.
Yeah.
And unfortunately, because of the current site with the ODOT and the apocalypse and interchange, it's going to go away. But, this really gives you a brand-new opportunity for visibility and also the drive-through aspect that are really, I think, will be very successful on that location. That's a great location. So, I'm excited to see it fill that spot, and it's kind of the perfect thing really to go there, especially with the hotel business. The hotel's coming online soon, and just to, you know, all the people going to work and going out for lunch.
Yeah, I mean, just that continued investment right there in the, the green belt and 32 corridor, the, you know, the one thing I really like with the site plan is how the parking is essentially offset, you know, your cars per hour and what's really coming through. And what you will hear from residents at other locations, or if you go outside the community, is if cars are ever waiting in a drive-through and backing up onto the road. So I really appreciate the design here to where it offsets that. You have the car load count going through there, and I think what you said, 120 cars per hour coming through, but having the two windows and having the two pay windows and pickup is, is just great. And I think that for me, that alleviates a concern that I know would be the question as far as cars being backed up on East Gate North Drive. And, you know, everyone thought it was a great idea, but stopping traffic, and, and I don't see that as an issue with this location, with this design. So, thank you. Applaud the engineer then for, for mapping that out, because you look at that parcel and the way that integrates with Jackson Lake Detention, I mean, that's, that's, it's a perfect use of that location. So, appreciate the, the development support there.
Any other comments, questions?
Yes, sir.
All right. So regarding Union Township Overlay Case Number 6-21-0, Gilligan Oil Company for Dunkin' Donuts, gentlemen, we're being asked to either approve, modify, or deny this request with looks like four modifications. Is there a motion to that effect?
Just, I'd like to make a motion to, in accordance with Section 1310 zoning resolution. Just like to make a motion to, in accordance with section thirteen-ten of the Zone Resolution, the Board of Trustees entered a motion to approve focus overlay district application in case number six twenty-one dash zero, with the four recommended modifications listed at the bottom of the page.
Second.
Roll call. Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Luke?
Yes.
Mr. McGraw?
Yes.
Motion carries.
So congratulations, congratulations on staying in our community too. Now we just got to work on Subway next.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, gentlemen. That concludes our public hearings. Is there any old business tonight?
I have none.
We move on to new business. The first item is approval of payments. These are basically paying our bills as prepared by Mr. Ron Campbell, our fiscal officer. Is there any question or discussion? If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call. Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Luke?
Yes.
Mr. McGraw?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next item is approval of our monthly financial report. This is also prepared and presented by Mr. Ron Campbell, our fiscal officer.
Gentlemen, is there a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call. Mr. Luke?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes, sir.
Mr. McGraw?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving right along to purchase orders. Gentlemen, we're being asked to approve these purchase orders that exceed $10,000. These are recommended by Mr. Ken Geis, our township administrator. Mr. Geis, could you please read through these for us?
First is to Pitney Bowes for the retail postage meter at $50,000. The next is for the United States Postal Service, and that's for retail postage, again, at $50,000. Phoenix Safety Outfitters, eleven sets of turnout gear, $31,000 for the fire department. The Stryker Sales Corporation, that's for the bariatric cot, the Power Pro XT, $18,700. Beach Quan Ford to the Police Department for six new cars, $196,375.70, and that's state bid pricing. J.K. Muir Corporation, that's for the Veterans Park, the Tennis Court Rehabilitation Project at $49,700. Atlantic Sign Company for Fire Station Forty-Nine, the new LED sign, $34,500. Kuntz Equipment LLC for a new gravely sixty-inch mower for the cemetery at $12,500. And the last is to the John R. Jurgensen Company for the 2021 road resurfacing program at $600,000.
Okay. Any questions, gentlemen?
I have none. They've all been discussed.
Mr. Geis, I had a couple of questions. One, the bariatric cart, I meant to ask this before during your report, and I didn't get around to it, but can you explain, or can Chief Dimey explain, what is the difference between this and like a regular cart? What is the advantage, and why would it be good for the whole region to have this?
I can defer to the chief on that.
The bariatric, the bariatric cart in vision to the added weight capacity of the cot. It also has a wider capacity, and a lot of times, even with patients that we can put on the weight-rated cots that we have now, because of the overall size of the patient, you have a problem transporting them. You need longer straps, you have to put strap extenders on there, but they hang over both sides of the cot. So this also has what I will call, if you've seen a stretcher before, they have the vertical rails on either side, like a hospital bed, to keep from falling off. This has more like wings on it, so the wings fold outward so that the person is stable when they're transported. And it's problematic when you put them on, you know, a standard cot now, even at the lower weight, and that if, you know, you turn a corner or something, you know, you stand a chance of somebody rolling off the cot. So in addition to the weight capacity, it has a wider girth to stably and safely transport a larger-sized patient.
Okay. That makes a lot of sense. So if another jurisdiction, say, Batavia, had a patient that they just can't transport or need help, this is something we could assist, I guess? Is that...
Yeah, I mean, absolutely, through mutual aid, it would be available. And just a little history, there used to be a bariatric unit, an ambulance specifically set up for bariatric patients in Miami Township, that's no longer in service. Anderson Township used to have a bariatric, and they both had them in reserve backup ambulances that, as Mr. Geis already explained, that, you know, maintaining those or having it work when you need it was a problem. Since they were backup units, they were older units, and when they were done with their life expectancy, they were taken out of service and they weren't replaced. And our intention is to put this as a primary unit. Number one, it will stay available and it'll be in service. And number two, you know, we're spending a lot of money for that cot, it's $18,000. We'll be getting use out of it on a regular basis, because we can use it for standard-sized patients as well, not just using it for bariatric patients, which was how these other units were used, they were strictly being used for bariatric patients.
Okay. Appreciate that explanation.
No problem.
Makes me understand a lot better. So thank you. And then, Mr. Geis, first of all, the Tennis Court Rehab Project, this is something a lot of community members have been asking for us to do. So I appreciate this finally coming forward. I know it's something we've tried to budget in many times, and I'm glad we're able to do it at this time. So first of all, congratulations on that, but part of our paving project though, too, we're going to pave the parking lot of Veterans Park is the goal, I believe. But this paving for the Tennis Courts is totally separate, right? It's a different kind of thing altogether, right?
Yes.
To make it work the way it's supposed to work?
Correct.
Okay. So that's great. And finally, this is not a question, but more of a comment. The gentleman, I think we should support the fire station LED sign. It's a great way to communicate to our residents on an ongoing basis every day.
That's right. The notification of everything that's going on in township also.
Right, and they could also put emergency messages if it's ever needed.
Absolutely.
So as far as transparency, getting information out, letting people know where meetings are and different events, I think this goes a long way to help do that. So I think they've been pretty good at the other locations, like the police station and at the other fire stations, so. So if there's no other questions or comments, I'll ask for a motion then to approve the purchase orders as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call. Mr. McGee?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Luke?
Yes.
Mr. McGraw?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, great. Item D is the Old Bark Salt Run Road. I'm willing to make a motion myself on this one, but, or someone else can, but I just kind of want to clarify where I believe we should go. And then, gentlemen, you can mention how you feel about it, and we can come to some kind of conclusion here. First of all, nineteen sixty-nine, nineteen seventy, if things were done properly, the road should have been vacated. There's probably private property owners that got compensated at the time to have this right-ofway from ODOT. And for whatever reason, you know, nineteen seventy, the county didn't follow through, the engineer didn't follow through, or ODOT didn't follow through, and there was no vacation that anybody could find. So therefore, I mean, it probably, at this point, should be a road that's a private drive. But since nothing was done at the time, and, you know, we do these vacations from time to time, and we're going to talk about one tonight, they seemed kind of routine at the time, and now I really appreciate it a lot more, Mr. Geis. By dotting your i's and crossing the t's on small things like a vacation of a road, people won't be coming back and saying, "Well, back in 2021, the trustees ignored this and didn't do anything about it, and fifty years later, we're having a problem." So I think it's important to note that doing business, you know, in a professional way and taking care of these things right as they come up is the way to go. So having said all that, I think to do the right thing, these homeowners, we're, I believe, we're obligated to go ahead and, you know, take over the maintenance and fix the road, so they can get in and out of their houses. We can get a fire truck down or an ambulance if necessary. And the costs seem relatively affordable, according to Mr. Geis's number. And, but I think we ought to do it the proper way and ask, request that ODOT transfer the right-ofway to the township, so we can get a proper township number on it and file it with the county engineer and the auditor's office in that respect. So that's my thoughts on it. I think, at the end of the day, we should do the right thing at this point and take care of our residents who live down there, who, unfortunately, many, many years later, may not be the original homeowners. I have no idea how many homeowners have gone through there, but...
So you're talking fifty years ago?
Yeah, it's a long time, so...
Trustee McGraw, I mean, we're on the same page with that. I mean, when I first heard the issue and spoke with the homeowner often on it, you know, just wanted to push for a defined answer and get a defined answer from the township and also the county. So again, I really appreciate Mr. Geis being able to report on this tonight for the defined answer for it, bring it to the board for overall board decision. And I think you're right in your analysis as far as doing the right thing and maybe what some options may be there. From what I recall, the initial report to, you know, it's basically do the right thing or do nothing, which only says not. But do the right thing still has a question, and that's between Bark Salt Run Road versus the county saying Old Bark Salt Run Road and the changing of the nine-one-one system, the change of address that that may drive. So I think if we finalize that detail, then I think that that's kind of the only major outstanding wrinkle, at least, as I can see. I don't know where Trustee McGee is on the matter, but I know where two of us are at right now, so...
You know where three of us are at.
Them three of us.
Well, I would, I would be in agreement to keep it as a Bark Salt Run address. That's what they currently have.
And a township road.
And they could have a township road, but also, I'm sure we could accommodate by putting a special sign too, like addresses, you know, the arrow or something pointing. I've seen street signs like that where it, you know, identifies an address, this direction, that way delivery people and, you know, the pizza guy and the ambulance ultimately wouldn't know that's where that address is, if that's helpful. So that's something the service department and our fire department, police department can decide, I guess, the best way to do that. But I'm in agreement with the analysis that keep the current address that it is. I'm not afraid of new street names.
All right, and I agree with you on that, as far as if we have that, if we need any input from county. I guess I'm not clear right now as far as if we need some additional input before that moves forward. So I think we'll get answers on that. I will say, with, in essentially all fairness, looking through the two-seventy-five corridor and looking at, you know, what potentially other roads have this issue, I think this is a one-off. And I want to ask Mr. Geis if there is potentially any other roads that have this same type of issue, because I think we do want to know, essentially, the precedent setting with that, doing the right thing. Right now, an instance of this road, let's, you know, not, not, you know, not be unclear as to if there's any other additional roads that have the same issues. So, Mr. Geis, are there any other roads that are like, like have this issue from ODOT taking the right-ofway?
I don't know of any other roads right now. We did have a question about Old Dogwood Lane some time ago, but that was, I think that situation's been rectified by some additional purchases, by some folks off of Claddy Road as well on that. But I don't know of any other issues that are relative to this. And as it relates to the addressing or whatever, to the best of my knowledge, and since nineteen eighty-five, I don't think there's ever been an issue with people understanding where those addresses are. So our safety services people in Public Works, they're well-versed in the, I think even in the training and the orientation process, that's one of the places where they take them and make sure they know that there are houses back there that have that address as well, so...
Well, I appreciate that, and, yeah, I mean, I think that, I guess, all in saying is that explicitly states how unique this situation is too. So it's not to be viewed that it's, you know, a, other residents may, you know, feel that their road needs paved and, you know, taken care of in this way. This is a unique situation. So everything else follows the due process that we have with the annual road bidding and resurfacing projects. So I just want to kind of keep that clear distinction.
Okay. I think we did have one instance that I remember, since I've been on the board, of Ikeholz Road in Summerside with the changeover of the Ikeholz Connector. There was some cleanup of Bell's Lane, Ikeholz Road, Summerside, changing a little bit the county street, the county roads there, but that didn't result in any change to the township. There wasn't cleanup there to make it make more sense to people nowadays. So is there any other discussion then?
You made the motion.
Well, I'll make a motion, if you want, I can go ahead and make a motion. If there's any further discussion, we can move forward. But I guess the best way I would word this would be, I'll make a motion to authorize our township administrator to take necessary steps to transfer ODOT right-ofway to become a township road of Bark Salt Run Road and file all necessary documents with the proper county officials and other officials. Does that sound good?
I second it.
Okay, roll call. Mr. McGraw?
Yes.
Mr. Luke?
Yes.
And Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Motion carries.
So thank you, Mr. Geis, for all the research. I know there was a lot of information went into that, just three hundred, two-hundred-and-eighty-three feet of roads.
Yeah, a lot of work.
Interesting history though, so appreciate it. All right. So we'll move on to our 2021 roadway resurfacing project bid award. Gentlemen, we're being asked to award the 2021 roadway resurfacing program to the John R. Jurgensen Companies in the amount of $512,614.50, as the lowest, most responsive, and most responsible bidder. It further authorizes the township administrator to execute any and all relevant contractual documents thereto, and persons of the same. Is there any discussion or questions about our road resurfacing project for 2021?
I think it speaks for itself, sir.
Okay. Mr. Luke?
No, nothing further.
I'll ask for a motion then?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call. Mr. Luke?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. McGraw?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And our administration does a great job of updating our website. You can find the road resurfacing projects on our website. We want to review more about that. We'll move on to our resolutions for the night. We've got two tonight. The first one is we're being asked to adopt resolution 2021 dash zero eight. It's a resolution ordering the vacation of Clepper Lane pursuant to the Ohio Revised Code five-five-five-three dash, or point zero-four-five. We're being asked to adopt this resolution seeking to vacate a certain portion of Clepper Lane and petitioning such action by the Clermont County Board of County Commissioners pursuant to Ohio Revised Code five-five-five-three point zero-four-five. Gentlemen, this is a part of Clepper Lane that's basically not being used anymore because of the new road changes and road improvements to Clepper Lane. Is there any other comments or questions?
I think Mr. Geis handled it very well this night, you also, and I thank you very much for that. You have no other questions?
All right. I'll ask for a motion to adopt this resolution, twenty twenty-one dash zero eight, ordering the vacation of part of Clepper Lane.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call. Mr. McGee?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Luke?
Yes.
Mr. McGraw?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next resolution is resolution 2021 dash zero nine. It's a nuisance abatement resolution. We're being asked to authorize the abatement and removal of vegetation, noxious weeds, garbage, trash, and debris pursuant to section five-zero-five point eight-seven of the Ohio Revised Code at the following properties. This would be four-sixty Old State Route seventy-four in the Mount Carmel area. Gentlemen, you've been given some information on this. It's a property that has become a dumping ground. As you can see from the pictures, it is pretty awful what has gone on there. And, Mr. Wright, I want to thank you and your staff for doing a great job of getting out there and pursuing this legal... We hate to, Mr. McGee... We hate to, Mr. McGee will probably say, we hate to have to do this, but in this case, it's, I believe it's warranted.
It's terrible.
Any comments, gentlemen, or questions?
Same old thing, just take care of the property. Get it done. I know maybe, maybe the property owner didn't have anything to do with it, that this is absolutely a mess and he should see, take care of his property, make sure it's kept clean and decent.
Yeah, you don't want to have an absentee owner who doesn't pay attention to what's going on.
Amen.
Yeah, I know the residents around Old State Route seventy-four there in Mount Carmel be, you know, very happy to have that taken care of.
Absolutely.
Just, again, look forward to seeing continued improvement in that area, so it's a start.
And, and just so the residents know, there's a process we have to follow. People have property rights, property owners have private property rights, and we can't just march in and do what we feel like just because it...
Takes time.
Yeah, it takes time to go through this process, and you have to follow the legal process and give everybody due process. But in this case, I'm glad that we've moved as quickly as we possibly can, and hopefully the residents are understanding that we're doing everything that we can on our end to pursue these types of problems. If there's no further discussion then, I'll ask for a motion to adopt Resolution twenty-twenty-one dash zero-nine regarding the abatement of trash at this location, four-sixty Old State Route seventy-four.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call. Mr. Loeb?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. McGraw?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. So, that concludes our regular business. Gentlemen, is there anything we missed?
Pretty well tonight.
I'll then open the floor for comments from our board members. Gentlemen, anything you'd like to bring up tonight?
Thanks for the nice meeting we had yesterday at the forum.
The Chamber Economic Forecast, twenty-twenty-one?
That was, that was great. Very well done, very well put, Alex Kovat, whatever his name was.
I ain't gonna try to say it.
Did a, did a very good job, and I'm very appreciative by all of that. I talked to you there, and I think it was very enlightening.
Yeah, obviously a very bright individual. He, his family moved from Russia when he was ten years old, and to get as far as he has is amazing.
Yeah, just, what'd he say, he's forty?
Yeah.
Thirty years.
Yeah, he did a remarkable job. And thanks for Crossroads for hosting. What a beautiful venue. It was well-done by them and their participation, and also the Chamber did a great job of...
Yes, always.
Making a very, and our staff, our staff was there, did a great job.
Our staff was there doing, and doing their usual job.
And thanks both trust, all three trustees were present, and Mr. Geis, Mr. Wright, were all able to be there, so that made it even nicer, so it was a nice morning.
Yeah, great, great event put on by the Chamber of Commerce, and again, I guess the main message there out of the presentation is very bullish on the near term, you know, next year, year and a half of investment dollars and development and time to leverage those low interest rates and, and invest, so good, good, good news all the way around for township and Chamber of Commerce.
Very much so.
And Crossroads is always a tremendous facility. So, I do have a couple additional comments.
Yeah.
Vietnam Veterans, six-forty-nine. They'll be doing a April tenth and eleventh, a meet and greet at Everything Bagels from eight AM to two PM. They're gonna have information out for veterans, any veterans welcome to come. They're veteran service officers there, and they're also collecting flags, and that's their American flags for retirement. And then, as you look further out to May twenty-fourth, they'll just, they'll be doing their Memorial Day, six AM, and reading of the names begin and two PM ceremony. And gentlemen, I know we've all received some information from the Chamber of Commerce on the Salute to Leadership Award nominations, just status to keep that in mind, and it's due by the end of April as far as if the, if the township and boards nominate an outstanding community leader for that. And, you know, I just have to put a little recognition to, during twenty-twenty, I spoke with several local businesses, checking in on them, and TQL was one of the places where I spoke several times with Kerry Byrne and Ken Oaks, the owner. You know, and at that time, they were on target for a four-billion-dollar year, and last week they just announced that they exceeded that four-billion-dollar mark, and now they're on target for five billion in twenty-twenty-one. I just think that's very noteworthy, so continue to recognize their incredible growth and impact. Union Township is, you know, one, they work on filling their newest building, and as Kerry Byrne, you know, has said, maybe build another one, so, you know, it's gotta keep, keep that energy moving and keep that going. You see during COVID and, and twenty-twenty, how important the trucking industry was across the country, so it's, it's really a, a great American story with what's happened with total quality logistics and, and what is happening, taking place there and that opportunity zone, so just noteworthy to share.
All right, thank you. And just a reminder too, thank you for mentioning the retirement of the flags that you could bring up to the, that veterans event at Everything Bagels. We also have a receptacle here at the township. Anytime you have a flag that's tattered and torn and you don't know what to do with it, bring it up here. We can, we hold on to it for the, the Vietnam veterans, and then they use it in their, as part of their retirement, so it's a great way to, you know, there's different ways you can get rid of flags, but that's the best I can think of around here.
Usually have that in June on Flag Day week.
Right, exactly. I did want to bring up, Mr. McGee, you mentioned the economic forecast, that went really well. Sharefax, they're gonna open their new corporate headquarters on April twelfth, coming up Monday, so, yeah, I think they're, some of their office hours will be closed on Saturday as they move stuff around, so if you happen to bank with Sharefax, just be aware of that, but congratulations to them. I don't know if you've seen the building at night, they have some really cool lighting on that building. You can see it from the interstate and just drive down Ivy Point, you know, after this meeting, just a short drive over there, take a look at it if you haven't seen it yet, it's really, really neat looking. Lastly, I did want to mention, just circle back around to Mount Carmel again, there's been some, some residents over there who have brought up some of the concerns with the part of Old State Route seventy-four, and I think in some ways they dismissed a lot of the work that the trustees have done to help Mount Carmel improve, but, you know, I agree that we want to do more, and there's, there's a lot of potential there. You know, I think for some years, there was a concern with State Route thirty-two blast through there, and, you know, people were reluctant to invest, but I think the, the road is settled at this point, and the new Eichols Connector's in place, and the improvements to the intersection at Bell's Lane and Mount Carmel-Dubasco Road. Tonight, we had a case for Gold Star. You know, they're actually, you know, that kind of indicates that, hey, looking down the street and people are fixing stuff up, it's time for us to assert them.
That's right.
So, I think it's gonna be catching on as, as you, as we go along. We had just had a case at our last meeting to build a new structure in Mount Carmel, a very beautiful structure. So, there are some real positive things happening, and our zoning department will continue to do inspections and find out if there's problems, but I just want the Mount Carmel residents over there to know that we do care about that area, we are concerned about it, and we're gonna continue to do what we can. We're, we're somewhat limited, I mean, it comes down to private investment at the end of the day, but we're gonna do what the township can do to try to push things along, so I think tonight was a couple good steps we saw right in this meeting to keep, keep the gas pedal to the floor, so. So, I want to thank our administration and our zoning department for all the work, and also the trustees. I mean, technically, Mr. McGee, you're a resident of Mount, the Mount Carmel area, and Mr. Loeb, you mentioned you've been talking to some of the residents, so I think that's a clear indication that we do care what's going on over there, and we're, we're gonna take action that's necessary.
I think they, they see we're trying to do something, trying to move forward, get it taken care of with the case he showed them a lot, I think, case to clean that whole corner up.
Yeah.
And down there for a couple hundred foot, either way. That was a automobile dealer, used car, mechanic work, an old bar for years.
But that's a clear-cut case where our administration and our zoning department did a lot of work to make that come about, because, as you know, that was a collection of parcels there.
Yes.
And to make, put all that together and get something to happen was a big deal.
Yes.
Some of the parcels in Mount Carmel are very small, so you're limited, you know, with modern parking requirements and size of business, you know, there's limitations, but with the imagination of our administration and our zoning department and planning department, they've done a great job of figuring that out, how do we get around those obstacles?
And they'll continue to get it done.
Mount Carmel Brewing is another clear-cut example of that.
Yes.
Same, same issue down there, where the parcels were long and narrow, and where they were able to help the, the owners of that business assemble two or three parcels together and build a fabulous facility. So, I just wanted to bring that up because I, I've just heard some comments lately from Mount Carmel, and just want to let everybody know we're, we're on the case. So, anything else, gentlemen? All right. I'll open the floor for public comments. Is there anyone here tonight who would like to make a comment? Yes, please come forward. If you don't mind, for the record, state your name and address.
Kurt Wilson, forty-six-eleven, Mearbridge Court.
Yes. Go ahead.
Okay. I was here a few months ago, you know, talking about change in taxes and, you know, how taxes are done here in the, in the township, missed last month and everything and that, but, you know, been looking into things. You know, basically, how taxes are done here, it's, we'll probably say that way. I don't, I'm not as familiar with township government as all the power that you, that you can do or anything. The thing about it is, is through property reevaluations, you know, and levies and everything, there's sometimes you get a windfall. Now, my thing is, is if you have excess amount of taxes, you can either use them for projects that you have never been able to do to get them done, or, which I don't know if it's within your power, you know, for a lot of people that I've, I've, I've talked with, you know, at my age and that, they're retired. A lot of them have lived here all their life and everything, and that's why I keep bringing that up. And if there's any way, if there's excess monies or something like that, it's within your power to establish some kind of fund to help these people who may lose their homes because of excess property tax. Property taxes are a mess in this state. They are, they're a burden on people. They force governments and, and, and schools to constantly go back to the voters. A lot of times, the voters may say no, and then you have to try to make do and stretch, so a lot of times it makes you ask for way more than you need, and then you may get it, you know. So, there's a lot that has to change. You know, it, it has to start at the local level, the county, the state, national, I don't even know what's gonna happen there, that's out of control. But here in Ohio and everything and that, a lot can be done. We just have to get people that are gonna do it, quit talking and do it. You know, a lot of time spent on discussing and everything, but if we don't do anything about it, then talking about it is just a waste of time. I'm gonna spend more time, you know, getting to know more township government, and eventually, like I keep saying, I'm gonna retire any time now, but when I do, then I'm gonna start making my presence known at, at the commissioners. I wish they would have open forums like this instead of having them during the day when other people are working and can't really go. You know, so, anyway, most of what I, some of the things that I, I've seen, and one of the questions I have was, is when it comes to maintenance, mainly snow removal, okay? We have, we have township, county, and state, all right? You live not too far from me, we, we use Teal Town a lot, and you notice that, well, in my, in my subdivision, here comes Union Township, plows it and everything, puts salt down, then you go out to, to Teal Town, and it's an ice rink, you know, and that's not a fun place to, to go onto the side of the road. I've seen SUVs, four-wheel-drive, big trucks and everything sitting in a ditch. I, I don't, it, it doesn't seem to me very efficient to have a township truck drive over Teal Town Road to clear my street, which plowing is fine, but to, you know, salt or anything like that, which it's never much of a problem to get out of a township, you know, out of a subdivision road. When you get onto a secondary or a main road, then you start having the issues, especially if it's snow-covered. So, I'm not too sure why, that, when it comes to certain services like that, they can't be combined. You know, why can't they combine together and then go ahead and say, hey, we gotta take care of these roads first, and then get to the other ones later? They really don't need to be plowed right away, you know, so I consider our township more efficient than our county, and our state is just horrible, you know. So, I mean, it seems to me like, you know, and I'm bringing this up because you talk to people who talk to people, and maybe they may do something about it, you know. It's just observations that I've seen. It may not be possible, but I'll tell you, nothing's impossible if you want to do it.
Sure.
So, my thing would be is that, you know, a lot of this stuff that we see, you know, is, why can't we fix it? You know, it has to start somewhere. A lot of times, you know, a lot, and, and it's territorial sometimes, you know, and everything and that, like where I work and that, there's a lot of different departments, and everybody wants to protect their own, but this has to do with public safety, you know, and efficiency. You know, we want to make sure, you know, when it comes to any more, people are stretched to the limit when it comes to taxes, you know, anything to pay for, it's expensive. So, for our govern, our county, our township, county, and state governments, and even federal to be more efficient on how they spend the money. You know, infrastructure, I totally agree. The interstate highway system in the fifties really kick-started an economic boom that continues to this day, okay? Not giving money to a local businessman, you know. My thing is, if you have that kind of excess money, then there's people in the, our township, our residents, our friends, our neighbors, our parents, our, our kids, whoever, that, you know, are struggling to try to do something. Myself, I'm not, okay? If you came and said, hey, we can have certain people who can help get this fund together, I'll help. You know, I can do whatever I can. I'm not rich, but I'm not poor either. You know, I, I can, you know, do whatever it is in that. I've seen enough people in that scared to death of losing their homes because of a big school levy and things like that, so...
Well, we, we appreciate your comments and you coming to the meeting tonight, we really do. Thank you for being here. One thing the township did do many years ago, even before I was on the board, was we took over our own nine-one-one communications instead of the county running it. Well, we did that because of the things, the reasons you're mentioning, efficiency and closer to the people who really need the care or the police to come, so there's some cases where it's more efficient for the local government to do a certain task, and as you can see from the street plowing, it comes the light, you know, our crews do a great job of getting out and taking care of our streets, and then sometimes I'm on my way to work and I'm calling Mr. Geis to say, hey, our streets are fine, but Teal Town or Old Seventy-four is a mess.
Yeah, and it's a county road.
Yeah, so, we do work, but we have a good relationship with the county, and we do work with them, so I think there's some things that can be done. As far as the real estate taxes, we can't really answer that on this level, that's a state issue for your state rep, but...
Correct.
I think something could be done in the future to help retire people more in their single-family home, reduce their, their obligation. I think that would make more sense.
I totally agree.
There's a sort of a reduction now, I don't know how much it is, but...
The homestead, but you have to be very low-income.
Yeah.
Anymore, you don't have to be very low-income to lose your home.
Right.
You know, if you're trying to do social security, you may have a small pension or whatever, pensions are, are gone for a lot of people. So, it's basically, social security are work until you drop.
I just want you to know that our board of trustees here, we work very hard to not have to go to property tax as a solution. We work very hard to, we, we put that levy off as long as we could for many, many years by finding creative ways to fund services that you need without having to go to you every time to pay for it. You know, a good example of that is the West Claremont High School, where there was no bond levy for that, and we found a creative way to be able to fund that new school without forcing the taxpayers to have to pay more property tax.
Yeah, and you've had a, you had a, a school board too at that time that was doing a very good job.
Yes.
And that's another matter, but most of the property taxes has to do with schools and, you know, and, and the thing about it is, it's a system that needs to be fixed.
I agree.
To take the burden off of a, a small amount of people.
Yeah, I think that would, a great first step would be for the state to look at the retired people in their single-family home and give them more of a reduction, but...
And my thing is, is there's some members here on the board who probably would like to go up further, you know, maybe in the state or whatever like that, so like, you know, if you do that, to take with you, you know, things like this. You know, you get people in there, you know, and they just, you know, sometimes the glamour, I'm not sure what it is and everything, they go in there with ideals and they seem to fall away. away. If you keep those and everything and that, because what's, what's happening is, is in the country and that, is everyone is, is struggling to try to get by. There's a lot of people doing that. And the thing about it is, is that just handouts doesn't, to me, doesn't work. You know, it's, it's basically, you know, you have, you have to look at, at situations, and there are certain people that do absolutely need help, and other people who don't need help, you know? So there, there's a lot to consider, but you have to try to, when there is taxation, you have to try to find a way to make it fair, okay? So everybody pays, you know? I mean, do we want investment? Do we want to build more jobs and everything? Yes, we do. But to me, the government does that through, through improvements, infrastructure, you know, and, and other things, and maintenance of the roads, you know, aggressive, you know, just ways to get around has created a boom in this country. So, and a lot of things, you know, and then services like police and fire is very important, you know, so there's, there's priorities. And then after that, then, you know, you take a look at some other things if you need to. But my thing is, is that a lot of times, but there's so many changes in this country going on, economically, politically, and everything, that we have to change with them. We just can't keep doing it the same way. There has to be new ideas, new ways of doing things, and my personal opinion is voters need to quit going into recycling politicians, okay? You know, we've had some politicians in state and that, just jumped around in so many offices and that, it's almost like whack-a-mole, you know? So, you know, and we got, we got fresh, need fresh ideas, new ways of doing things and looking at, hey, this is how America is today, not 40 years ago.
Well, we appreciate your comments, and we appreciate you coming out tonight.
And like I say, I want to keep coming to meetings and spend more time listening and then on the pulpit, so, and everything and that, but I just want to let my feelings known and, and then see what can be done, you know? What can we do at this level, and then, you know, higher also.
Okay, great.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson, thank you for your feedback.
Is there anyone else here who would like to speak tonight? All right, seeing there's no one. Gentlemen, I just want to go through real quick the upcoming events. First of all, our post office continues to be open for business, and I was here a couple Saturdays ago, and actually, Mr. Geis was doing some post office business too that same day, but it was very busy, wasn't it? They were doing great, so please use our post office, it's really convenient. The Civic Center offices are still open to the public for zoning permits and general information. Our Queen City Room is now open for limited reservations for government and nonprofits only. See our website for details on that. This Saturday, very important, Furniture Fair is hosting a Community Shred Day at the East Gate, 4363 East Gate Square Drive location on Saturday. This is a program of our local Citizens Police Academy, and they raise funds for Crime Stoppers. So it's a well, it's a good event, you can get rid of old prescription drugs, you can also get rid of documents that you want to shred. If you got old checks and bills and things that are, you know, this is a great opportunity to do that, also support local crime stoppers. So our Citizens Police Academy members will be out in full force that day, and you can talk to them and see what, what's going on with them. Also, Spring Junk Days, Mr. Harden has mentioned this earlier, they take place April 19th through April 24th. You can drop off your junk and avoid situations like we had in Mount Carmel there.
Amen, yeah.
You can bring up your old couch and drop it off there instead of dumping it somewhere. So that's why we do it. Also, McNicholas High School is hosting a Community Shred fundraising event also on April 24th from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. That's a fundraiser for them. And just a quick note that our Township Administration offices will be closed on Monday, May 31st, in observance of Memorial Day. We'll have a meeting before that, but gentlemen, Memorial Day is already upon us and coming up in the future to remember those who gave their lives for our country.
Amen, brother.
So, it's a lot to take in, but all these things are listed on our Township website. If you want more information, it's a great place, great resource for information like this. Gentlemen, is there anything else?
Actually, as you talk about the dates, I got one, one saved question, just to run through real quick, and then I'll point it with Mr. Geis here. The Salute to Leaders that was speaking of earlier, so between now and our next trustee meeting, the nominations are due, so are you able to, as far as point of business with that, facilitate just between seeing if there's a nomination and a consensus between the three trustees, or do you need a two-thirds support and, and at a meeting, or do you need unanimous approval for that type of action to occur? To just have a general consensus for a nomination package to go forward on the salute to leaders?
Typically, that's not done by board action. It's, if someone would contact me, I could contact the others and they can respond back to me as it relates to whether or not they agree with that.
Okay, good. And that's, my assumption was the, your ability to just informally get, gain the consensus from each individual trustee on that action. Thank you, Mr. Geis. Any questions?
No, I was gonna say, we had some great nominees over the years.
Yes, go ahead.
So it's been a...
And it's great to know that we'll be able to recognize somebody and not miss that because of, you know, a requirement to have a unanimous approval and have us at a board meeting to, to take that as an action versus...
Right.
Mr. Geis being able to individually work with each trustee to, to put forward that consensus.
Absolutely, what's been done in the past. I recommend, we recommend, and continue it in the future.
I agree, that's, that's a good practice and good precedent. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Geis.
All right. If there's nothing else, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn our meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Real call, Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Logan?
Yes.
Mr. McGraw?
Yes.
Were adjourned at 8:53 p.m.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for being here tonight, thanks for watching online.
God bless you all and be safe going home.